Welcome everyone, everyone home and in the gallery. It is the committee meeting of the whole for the city of La Combe on Monday, October the sixth. Five thirty P M. All the meeting to order. Council, you had a look at the agenda? For Gullikson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Creasy. I'll move. We accept the gen- agenda as presented.
Anyone else? Very good. Please go ahead and vote. I think I saw a flash of green there, which would indicate, there it is. Six votes in favor. CEO Gaudi?
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. So now you'll be receiving presentations from that have requested more than guideline set in August for the two thousand twenty six budget of two point three percent. Short presentations and their work and the request. Just for addition, any group that specifically requested the opportunity to present, even if they are meeting the guideline. That this evening, this year, that is just F C S S. Over the last year, there was a change to the funding formula. Flying Club changed from a rent of property tax collected to an annual decision of council. They were invited to the presentation this evening, but declined the opportunity. Are requesting the two point three. Uh, sorry, increase over. Five, so they are. That line. Thank you for that. La Combe Mayor. Declined to attend? Is that what I've heard? Flying Club was invited, but they chosen to attend. So that they attend your meeting.
Thank you. All right, well, without further ado, I would ask that members of the La Combe district family community support services make their way up to the front. And of course, no stranger to this room is Crystal Zens, our executive director for F C S S. I would just remind you to please use the microphone for the benefit of everyone in the gallery and watching at home. And whenever you are prepared to start, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, thank you for our invitation tonight. We greatly appreciate it. I have our board chair Pastor Jake Bore here with us tonight. We have a board member in the gallery, Tori Goings, and thank you to everybody else who is here as well. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Creasy, councilors and CEO Gaudi, and to the directors who are also here. Thank you for welcoming us and inviting us. I appreciate all the council's support over this past year. All of you, I think, have been present at one or more of our events, fundraisers, celebrations. Thank you for the support during our regional spring meeting where we were featured and showcased our city and our F C S S programs by our central region. And thank you to all the administration for taking me under their wing and giving us guidance and everything. Thank you to Matt for saving us all the time in I T. And we've really appreciated piggybacking on all the training and first aid and all those things. It's an incredible gift that you guys give us to allow us in on all of those great resources. I wanted to just recognize our retiring counselors, Cora Hookstra and Ruben Conick. And thank you for your years of service and dedication to our community. To those who've chosen to run again, thank you as well. Public service takes a lot of heart, time, and family sacrifice, especially in this day and age. And that you love our community as much as I, that thank you so much for choosing to run again. Tonight, we'll show you how that same spirit of service continues through F C S S, bringing together, bringing people together, preventing hardship and building a stronger community. At this time, I'd like to invite our board chair Jake to bring greetings on behalf of our board of directors.
Thanks, Crystal. Um, good evening, Mayor Creasy and councilors and CEO Gaudi. Yeah, on behalf of the F C S S board, um, all volunteers who love the city and who have big hearts for for the people of this area as well, we like to thank you for your strong partnership. Without your partnership, we are not able to do as much as we're able to do presently. Your leader, your leadership helps us prevent hardship even before it begins. You help us to be proactive rather than reactive in a lot of situations. And it helps people stay connected and supported as well. Across Alberta, only about one in four municipalities contribute more than the required twenty percent to F C S S. And this is one of those communities. And that over contribution gives us so much more flexibility to respond quickly. We get to test new ideas and because of that, our F C S S has become a leader in the province of Alberta in terms of being a model for others as well. We test new ideas, we meet emerging needs. It's amazing how things are shifting and changing all the time. And you give us the ability to adjust sometimes on the fly. And that extra support means seniors are able to stay independent longer. Youth engage in a more positive way through a lot of the programs that we are able to run. And families are able to get help earlier rather than later. Again, trying to be more proactive rather than reactive. So on behalf of our board and our staff, I really want to say thank you. Thank you for your continuing your continuing support to put prevention in people first. Yeah, it means a lot to us knowing that we have your support and your partnership as well. So yeah, I'll give it back to Crystal now and let her do all the presentation stuff.
And at any point, please interrupt us or interrupt me if you have questions for either Jake or I. F C S S that you know is built on an eighty twenty partnership. I'll try to do the best to move slides. There you go. And the province provides eighty percent, city twenty percent here in La Combe, like Jake said. We are blessed with an over contribution from our city. On top of that, we're also a registered charity and able to fundraise, fundraise and leverage donations. Not only to make every dollar stress, but to do a lot of things outside of our F C S S mandate, like fill a fridge and lots of those helping programs. So we want to just reiterate, we thank you for the over contribution that makes our agency able to be nimble and something only smaller number of agencies can do in our province. I just wanted to highlight your current strategic goals that may be shifting and drifting as you get a new council. But growing community, managing resources, building community and supporting community mirrors our own pillars. Our current strategic goals are awareness and communication, infrastructure and stability, communication, collaboration and marketing and visibility. And I've aligned a lot of our programs into your guys' priorities. And I think we cover them all. Everything we do from senior support, youth leadership, family services, volunteerism connects directly to those priorities. Now, the big one for us would be our connects highlights. Connects has grown a lot over the past few years. The general ridership is the most, I would say, impressive number. Maybe some people would say concerning number because how do we adapt to that growth? In fact, since I've been here, since twenty, the end of twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, we have always been able to access connects for our own youth programs. This summer, we actually had to hire Prairie Bus Lines a couple of times because we cannot access connects because it's so, so busy. I know councillor Gullikson, you had a conversation with me in a parking lot when I first started saying we need to get the connects buses running more. They're in the parking lot and too much. Well, we definitely done that. They're never in the parking lot. They're not even available for us, but so that is something that we're going to have to problem solve as the needs grow in our community. But it's certainly great to see them all running and all full for sure. Those are some of the stats and the general ridership is pretty astounding. Our dialysis actually decreased and that is in part to two major reasons. We successfully want to celebrate two of our connects community members that run on the dialysis, got kidney transplants, which is amazing. Two in one years outstanding. And they're on a healthy path to healing. But there was also another pressing concern that I will present later at the La Combe Health Trust is that the Red Deer Dialysis Program is, has waitlist is and is over capacity, which affected us directly because they put some of our community members that are on dialysis that routinely ride our bus on opposite schedules and have to go on weekends. So we lost some riders due to them being forced to take dialysis on weekends and find their own transportation, whether it's taxis, asking friends for rides. I'm sure Volunteer Link has picked up some of that slack. So I think that's a bigger problem that we need to address with our M L A, the La Combe Health Trust and Alberta Health. But so that was slightly decreased, but almost in every other capacity connects is growing. Um, we've had a lot of growth in all of our programs and I'll just quickly run through some of them here. Our navigation is, has actually grown about six hundred percent since twenty twenty. So that's if people come in for emergency help, referrals, emails, our social media, private messaging response, all of those things has increased quite significantly. Our community tax volunteer tax program is, has insane growth. And this is a tricky program because our tax volunteers have to be incredibly gifted and trained in doing low income taxes. And so we have reached some pretty high stats there, which has also increased our volunteerism incredibly. Community supper attendance has increased quite a bit. And then, of course, that ultimately our community volunteer, community supper volunteer hours have increased. All of those things have increased. Tools for school, that was only year to date, so I didn't get the stat in this year for twenty twenty five. But we matched the stat for twenty twenty three. Yep. Do you have a question? The really cool thing about tools for school that you may not know, this was an innovation of my staff, they're geniuses. They actually connected coats for kids. We usually do in November. They blended it with tools for schools and shoes for kids. And our board accepted and approved that each child that came in for tools for schools, they either got shoes, tools, coats, all in the same day, plus a bag of groceries for back to school. So it was a one stop shop on one day. Some people came the next day. But it was an incredible idea to blend all of those programs into one day, so they don't have to come back three times. And it was, I think, some of you walked through, I think I took Nancy through and Jake through. And it was such a fun day to see those kids get all of the things for sure. And Santa's Anonymous is a partnership with the La Combe Kinsmen, and so that's staying pretty steady. Home support. Just a little bit like home support is shifting and drifting all the time because we lose clients and gain clients all the time. Senior service events is one of our biggest growth programs. That would be the seniors expo, seniors week, all of those things, as well as our one to one senior services. Our most loved campaign, and I think we're going to bring this really hard to Facebook this year because I think there needs to be an extra reminder to be kind on Facebook. And so this is a wonderful campaign that you will see a lot of pink on the Facebook pages this year, as well as twelve other communities have adopted this kindness campaign in February. And it's pretty cool to see our stuff in their communities and share that my team was real trailblazers in sharing that with the provincial, other provincial agencies. Sponsorships and donations. This is a pretty incredible stat in a time that the economy is not doing so great. And that is a tried, tested, true testament to the great community members of La Combe and how incredible, incredibly giving they are, not only of their time, but their dollars. Our fill a fridge is so generously supported. Jake would probably be the first to say, I'm always a little bit pessimistic. Every year we give fill a fridge because they said, there's no way we're going to meet the demand. Like all my friends and charity colleagues around the province, their donations are down. And La Combe is a testament to the kindness that is in La Combe because we have, have not went down in donations yet. So thanks for proving me wrong. I'd like to highlight the two thousand twenty five community grant recipients. Thank you for increasing that last year. Our board made a decision to do it completely in kind, so every single dollar, every single tax dollar that went to that program went directly to the charities. And we did that process totally in kind. The amount of requests was just over a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which was pretty outstanding. And we were able to give away fifty five. I wanted to quickly highlight one story. One agency agreed to share a story with me is the Broom Tree Sisters. This was year three of funding them. The first year they had ten Broom Tree Sisters, which is essentially a mentorship program for struggling moms. This year they had forty and are almost at fifty Broom Tree Sisters. And I promised to quote Tam, so I'm just gonna have to find my, my page here. But she said, the opposite of addiction is connection. And this is what the Broom Tree Sisters are bringing to our community. And they are way less reliant on our agencies for food and financial insecurities because they have that foundation. And I think back to my grandma just living four houses down. I think my mom would have died without her. So you could imagine how important in this day and age, how the, how important and impactful those Broom Tree Sisters are to our community. And they're doing a lot of great things. We, this was the first year we really funded a diverse amount of agencies from children to seniors, so it was pretty incredible. And even a school was funded this year with their Helping Hawks leadership program. We also hit the mark with our transportation with funding Volunteer Link, which was a pillar from our social needs assessment, the getting around pillar, which we all still need to work on, but that is an answer to some of our social needs for transportation when connects camp, can't do it for sure. Is there any questions so far or about the community grant? Okay, I just left this here for your, for your reading. But we wanted to really collect some, we got about a hundred of these, I think. So we picked a few of them, some of the thank yous to our donors from our community members that we serve through Fill Fridge as well as tools for schools. And we read these at some of our board meetings and it really reminds us why we're there, why we're doing the business part of it is for the people. Because behind every single stat I shared tonight is a story and someone that was impacted in a major way. There's been lots of studies done in Canada and the return on investment for every dollar invested in social services, three dollars is returned. And that's probably even higher in La Combe. I would probably bet my, my mark to say. And now to the financial set of things. Our ask is just slightly over two percent. Our provincial funding is set at that amount, the three hundred and thirty two thousand two hundred and twenty. And the twenty percent matching our two point three percent increase is asked in the over contribution as well. We kept the community grant the same as last year. The, you'll see a new line in our ask this year is the emergency social services. Whether this comes off our over contribution or is added is up to council. But this was a requirement from our F C S S A report that no F C S S social dollars can go to have our staff participate, train, take part in the emergency social services exercises or conference calls or training. So we were asked to make a new line for that. And that's the dollar amount that our board agreed upon because there's three staff dedicated to do all the trainings and keep up on the conference calls. And whether it's a live exercise or a tabletop, we want to contribute that to our community. And it just needs to be shown in a separate line this year in our bookkeeping. So that is our new line. And then our operational total request for F C S S programming and the E S S is five hundred and twenty three, five eighty three, and then we put the transport, transportation and connect separately because it needs to be shown separately as F C S S also may not spend F C S S dollars on transportation. So to run that program is slightly up from last year because the bus is super busy and to keep the buses running, we, we have to have more staff hours. So that's shown in that. We've also adapted some new training for the connects transportation and some regular maintenance and training for our team, which also we appreciate the city for providing some of that in kind, but they do need some of that outside of the city, what the city can offer. Any questions regarding the numbers?
Councillor Dallas?
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. So my apologies, you explained a little bit there. The emergency social services numbers, that is a provincially mandated item, or is this?
No, it's, it's, the number is up to you guys, whatever you want. We have to have a separate line in our budget for it because our F C S S grant cannot pay our staff to do the work. And so we basically will charge the line for our hours. So Clive has been, we, we operate the Clive program, the Clive F C S S, and they've been doing this for two years already. So when our F C S S Clive staff goes on a training or an exercise, she, she doesn't charge F C S S for that day, that the town of, or the village of Clive has to pay her for that day. So they pay her as an employee for that day. We're just going to cross transfer it to make it a little simpler.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so whatever the dollar amount the city will agree upon or for us, and if they deem that we should keep doing that work, I guess, is another decision too.
CEO Gaudi? So the emergency social, social services component is something the city has asked F C S S to take on. So this is like in the event of an emergency, doing some coordination for accommodating displaced people, connecting them with services, that sort of thing. It's, it's a good fit. What Director Zens is bringing up is the province says, well, that's not a, that's not F C S S thing, so you can't use our money for that. You need to use your, in this case, either your over contributed money or a direct requisition from the municipality for that service in some way. But it is something that's very valuable for the city. I was wondering, can you just one more time? Tell us how many rides were general ridership on the connects service for twenty twenty five?
Year to date?
Sorry, twenty twenty four.
Oh, yeah, let me go backwards because I don't have it memorized.
While she's doing this, so just to remind you that the connect service is actually something not, it's ran by F C S S through essentially a management contract with the city. It is a city provided service that is operated. A lot of gratitude, thank you for doing so by, by F C S S. I just wanted to point out that this general ridership, when you look at the Bolt two point O or whatever you want to call it in Black Falls, this is like well over half of what the, their entire Bolt system, the bus on demand system is delivering annually, so.
For their entire community, not accessible, right?
Yes, that's right, for the whole, I guess, public transportation. So you are getting into a range where, well, you can, you can see that.
And that's year to, twenty twenty five is year to date, so that's August thirty.
Okay, so you actually are going to come close to the same general ridership on through the connect service as Bolt is through their public transportation. So that is something to consider here is that I think when F C S S was tasked with managing the connects system where he's a handy, handy van, it was much more geared towards special transportation needs and filling that gap is now primarily filling a gap of
I would say we're, we still try to marry the accessibility, but we really push the bar. So we're doing a lot more charters and emergency needs, picking up community members in need to get them to the food rescue and food bank where we didn't do those type of things anymore. We're still not dial a ride or fixed address pickup, still one by one booking. Which leads me to another great challenge is the phone and booking system on paper. We may have to graduate to a digital system. Maybe not this year, but there probably needs to be a lot more advancements in our transportation. And there could, I see easily an expansion to meet some of the demands on our city and some of the gaps in transportation, especially through, many of you were at the social needs assessments at some point and transportation ended up being a major pillar. And not to blow up to go to major busing and multi partnerships. But maybe we can use it as a landing point for some small pilot projects or expansion in the future to fill those needs.
So while we're on that subject, even there's going to be probably five thousand rides for the year. At an expected cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I would suggest that's pretty cost effective use for transportation. And what all does that cost cover? I realize, I realize it's a city service, but it's under contract you and.
It's definitely a partnership that you guys do still absorb some of the costs in your budget. So you own the buses and the van. And you also absorb the fuel and the maintenance and the repairs. And we operate the, I guess, the resources, the human resources and the drivers and the training and the bookings, and we collect fees for service and manage all the extra sponsorships and donations that come in to run that transportation. So I would say it's kind of a good marriage that's working. But hopefully our, like, I mean, sometimes we do say no a lot lately. They said no to me. And we had to rent. And we had to rent per bus lines a few times. But you know, it is a growing service and and how do we prepare for that? You know, it's hard to say no to community members in need and we are having to do that now because it is so busy.
Thank you. Counselor Hookstra.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy. I just was wondering about the emergency social services. I'm just asking a question for our future counsel because you're adding it now, whereas that was being paid before to be.
To be honest, we were doing it under the F C S S umbrella.
Correct.
And former director Gila Point just said, well, we're over contributing already.
Right.
So it it makes sense just to absorb it. And but I understand that 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 is also realization that you are over contributing and and some municipalities don't. It just has to look separate and and be separate. So when we charge our hours, that it's actual numbers kind of not just, you know. An absorption of numbers that it's actually reflected dollar for dollar, the hour for hour.
Fair, can I continue? I mean, I really like that F C S S is acknowledged for the work that they do in that because I think it's. Very critical part of the whole emergency response. I guess I'm just curious about the numbers, why you just didn't pull the fourth thousand out of the fifty four at this point? Because it is being represented as a new cost, but it's been a cost that's been covered in the past. I I I'm just asking those tough questions.
For sure.
It's going to be a tough.
This will be a good time for Jake.
Well, we looked at, we looked at how much training is done, we looked at how many people were involved. And then we kind of just looked at salary and everything else as well. So we kind of keen to what we thought was a fair representation. As to where the money comes from, that really is in your hands. We thought we, because it had to be represented anyway, we would then put it in your hands. Whether you wanted to cover that cost directly or whether or not we absorb it into that over contribution. So this is why we separated it out to give you the opportunity to make that decision yourselves.
Fair justification, thank you.
And I just want to add that, as you see, all of our stats have increased. Navigation alone has increased six hundred percent in four years. So we also are absorbing the growth with this almost identical staff for the last four years. And which is becoming trickier and trickier, but we're resourceful and we're charity workers, so we make it happen. But if, yeah, like Jake said, I'll just reiterate that they did do hour for hour with three staff. And came up with that average dollar and and whether wherever council values to take it from, we respect that.
Thank you, Counselor Galloksen.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. This connects, I want to go back to that, I'm very excited about the increase. I love to see that. And certainly would like to see it expand further as we talked about in the past. I have a little bit of a concern though with dialysis, if they bring that back, if we're able to go back to Red Deer. Currently, would you have the capacity to pick up those increased rides?
Yes, we're still going to dialysis three days a week. So there's a morning trip to take them in. The bus doesn't stay with them, it comes back to La Combe and does multiple runs. And then goes back to them in the evening and picks them up. And so currently we just have like less seats filled. So the resources are still going to connects our our. I wouldn't say patients, but community members have been notified by the dialysis unit that they're no longer. Allowed to go on those days if they can, if they're deemed to find other means. If they're in a wheelchair, their priority. But if they're not in a wheelchair, then they've seemed to be shifted to the weekend dialysis regiment.
Thank you for that, I was concerned that they would, the rides would not be available, but.
Yeah, and a lot of people do think our bus stays with them, but it actually comes back to the city and does multiple runs.
Thank you for that.
The one thing I I will speak to and I've talked to Brett. A lot about is our mini bus, the the little guy, he only fits three people. And so not incredibly useful for growth. And so if there was ever a dream in my world, it would be to get a bigger van than that. Because three people doesn't fit the need with our growing program.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Awesome for your staff and the growth, the community awareness of our service of the services of F C S S. But I do want to also get back to Conexes. It was very directed to one demographics, all the respect years ago. And with our coordinators ends, you know, there are many needs. We've broadened it to, you know, F C S S is about those in need across the community. So shifted that direction, it's it's just, it's covering more broader that. You know, and it's exceptional growth. Lots more vision going forward with the need and one of growth, congratulations.
I want to be respectful of everyone's time that's presenting tonight, so was there additional?
No, that's just any questions.
Yeah, good. Does anyone have any any additional questions? Well, I hope I speak on behalf of all of council, we really appreciate the work that. F C S S and the board does on on the community's behalf. And look forward to bidding in requests at budget time. As you know, it's it's always a balancing act in a difficult time for us. But we certainly respect the work that you do in our community, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Becker, I understand that you're up next as the executive director for the La Combe District Historical Society. Whenever you're certainly up yourself. We give you a moment there to prepare your notes and a gentle reminder to be sure and use the microphone and and make sure that it's on. All right. It is not. Now it is.
Now it's red. Red means hot? Okay, okay, let's get it. Okay, so I have a lot of stuff to cover, I think I have twenty minutes, is that correct? Anybody? So I'll try to get through this in a timely manner. Okay. So my name is Daniel Becker, I'm the executive director of the La Combe Museum, which is operated by the La Combe District Historical Society. Excuse me. The La Combe District Historical Society is a register, not for profit and charity, whose primary mandate is preserve, educate and celebrate the history and culture. Of the city of La Combe and the surrounding area. If you don't know, we're a the La Combe District Historical Society, which you probably all do because you've been here for years at least. Oversees the performance of La Combe Museum through a governance style board of directors structure, our current board of directors. Deborah Gillard as the president, Christina Sturgeon, vice president, Donna Head, treasurer, Mary Dallas, secretary. Oh, no, that treasurer is wrong, actually, it's Daryl Daryl Kloppstra now, sorry about that. Kail Chamber Director, Roy Sturgeon Director, Donna Head Director, Jeanette Doring Director. La Combe and District, okay, good. La Combe District Historical Society owns both Mitchener House Building and the Blacksmith Shop Building in two thousand twenty one. Of course, the La Combe Museum entered into a lease agreement with the city of La Combe to operate the Flatiron Building Museum. And just to provide a verbal, I don't have fancy graphs for this one, I'm sorry. It's going to be a lot of just me reading out, so I apologize. Our two thousand twenty four Harvest Dinner fundraiser was held at Ellis Nature Center in two thousand twenty four. This was because we were notified at the time that forty nine C would be renovated in two thousand twenty four. But we supported the light up La Combe Parade with performing programming on forty nine C by bringing in Indigenous history facilitators with T P teachings. We supported the Combe Days by offering candle making workshops at the Blacksmith Shop and our programs at the Mitchener House. We kept our annual offering of school programs available during May and June, we had nine classes in two thousand twenty four. This included a French immersion class from Stettler. Because we had the Edwardian History Exhibit that was translated in French at the Flatiron Building, which was awesome. It's good to get a school from the county or from Stettler, Stettler County. We continued the senior dementia workshops at Royal Oak, we averaged roughly one every three months, those were kind of on demand. But it's pretty awesome to do. We provided the public with four free artifacts and archives focused workshops. And we maintained our county historic building list, a program started in two thousand twenty three. Kind of to assist county historic building owners with researching their buildings histories. We partnered with Saint Andrew's Church and the Library to facilitate Center for Truth and Reconciliation, Temperature thirtieth Broadcast Viewings at the L M C. And we held the mini powwow at Mitchener House for Indigenous Peoples' Day in two thousand twenty four. We attended the Fall Active Living Fair, of course, because it's an awesome place to promote our events, services and programs. So we offered four exhibits to the public, love letters from the past, that was a loan exhibit. Featured La Combe Artist Exhibit, that was four artists who did an art focused focused exhibit. And the Edwardian era era, which was a museum assistance program funded exhibit. That examined the Edwardian period in La Combe clothing and stuff like that. And this just in, which was a collections focused exhibit of all the pieces we had gotten over the last four years. In two thousand twenty four, we opened the Flatiron Building Museum to the public for a total of one thousand five hundred sixty hours. The Blacksmith Shop Museum and the Mitchener House Museum, due to the restrictions to summer hours, were open for just a total of nine hundred, unfortunately. Be honest, if we could open more, but you know, it is what it is. In two thousand twenty four, we hired a total of nine summer staff, one contracted summer blacksmith shop manager. For our year round operations, we had two full time permanent staff and we had one eight month intern for a total of twelve staff. In two thousand twenty four, in the same year, the La Combe Museum hired a new executive director. In June, meaning that for the most part, the organization was in a transitional phase, which kind of sucks, but it is what it is, we had to adapt. In total, the museum experienced a forty thousand three hundred and fifty seven dollar deficit at the end of two thousand twenty four. This was for two primary reasons. One, the organization had bloat in the summer student hirings equating to roughly twenty four thousand dollars. And the gift shop had an inventory adjustment of just under sixteen thousand. So for two thousand twenty five, the primary focus of the organization. Has been to ensure that operational standards can be met in ways that are fiscally sustainable while making small sustainable adjustments to staffing events and other services. So in two thousand twenty five, the La Combe Museum reduced its total summer student capacity, three students, obviously. Eight is a lot, couldn't find tasks for all of them, but. And one intern with primary funding from Young Canada Works, Canada Summer Jobs provided fifty to seventy five percent of the costs. Or thirty two thousand five hundred dollars. And we made sure to grant match with all their small grants and funding to make sure we negated that cost as much as possible. That was a big one from two thousand twenty four, so. We received fifteen thousand dollars from the Archaeological Society of Alberta Work and Learning Program or five thousand dollars per student. I do have to note here that this program is ending in two thousand twenty five. Sucks, so we can't utilize it next year, so we'll have to find another grant. There is a couple that I'm looking into right now. We also acquired six thousand dollars from the Historic Society of Alberta for summer student report support, that was awesome. And the city of La Combe also were totally awesome. And they provided twelve thousand two hundred and eleven during their spring adjustment for a proposal I brought forward. Which that was, it's still kind of ongoing, I think Brittany's still going through the, yeah, records and as the intern. Based on these numbers, we are forecasting net zero on student costs. And we've been able to extend our archives internship until March of two thousand twenty six, which is pretty awesome. In two thousand twenty four, we were awarded a grant split between two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty five of seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty six from the province. To renovate the windows on the Mitchener House, a project costing a total of thirty five thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars. We utilized five thousand dollars in two thousand twenty four and seventy five hundred in two thousand twenty five from the Heritage Resource Committee. And the remainder of the five thousand two hundred and eighty six was covered by our casino account, water break. In two thousand twenty four, I haven't moved the slide, I'm so sorry, that's slide five, okay, yeah. In two thousand twenty four, La Combe Museum saw an end to its previous strategic plan. And through discussions with the Board of Directors, the organization drafted a five year plan until two thousand twenty thirty. I believe I submitted that with the funding application, which is, it was kind of intense, but. Kind of without this in plan, plan in place, we don't really have the ability to apply for a lot of grants through the Alberta Museum Association. Requires that we finish a strategic plan in submission to their operational staffing grant, so it's kind of a requirement of a regulatory body. We had the board sit down and identify a list of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that La Combe Museum experiences. And we're designed a series of goals to accomplish over the next five years, ideally. Moving on, major strengths, tourism turnout, that's a big one, city of La Combe relationship, the community support, community organizations. Our weaknesses, core funding is kind of hard, lacking capacity and strategic initiative. Fund development is an area that needs to be developed, high staff turnover. Temporary workers are typically a little less reliable than operational workers. Our services are a little bit unreliable at times in the summer based on summer students. And the access in the Flatiron, that's a big one that we receive. Commentary from community members, just to note, in two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three, we had two exhibitions, one on winter sports. And one on with Team Jigger. And we had two contributors to those exhibits that quite literally couldn't come into the building to view the exhibit they developed with us, which really sucked. Opportunities, capacity, fund development, marketing, print media and signage, Highway twelve is a massive, very busy street. It's a great opportunity there, community and organizations, amazing community organizations in town, L PAC. Is always behind us with helping us with different events, stuff like that. The Chamber of Commerce is always reaching out to us to kind of partner on different events. And downtown Draw, there's a lot of amazing legacy organizations, home hardware, waggs, Reds, Slantor and Chive, Uglies. We have a lot of organizations that downtown who are willing to participate on things and we need to capitalize on that. So and then the final is threats, volatile grant opportunities, as I stated, with the Work and Learning Program from the Archaeological Society. We have a tough time relying on these grants for sustainable growth. Slide. Five year plan. So the first and second goals of the five year plan are aimed at talent retention, this is one of the biggest. One of the 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 largest SWAT items that the board identified as a hindrance for development. Essentially, we have a tough time retaining staff past three to five years. And in short, the increase in funding that we've requested for this year is one of the aspects to. To address retention. The whole idea behind the interest is to hire a third staff member. With the funding increase, the following staff structure could be adopted. Curator of history, we currently do not have that position. Focused on research services, exhibitions, collections and archives management. In two thousand twenty five, we showcased Nova Chemical's fiftieth anniversary. And at the end, they donated ten thousand dollars to the organization. In two thousand twenty six, the city is hoping to coordinate building out an art festival, we've already been in contact about this. We believe there's a lot of great potential with that. Potentially for developing it out and applying to the Canadian Council for the Arts in for funding. And in the in two thousand twenty five, we received two significant donations from the Kinsman Club and the Chamber of Commerce. The Kinsman Club came forward and proposed donating every year money to help us. Cover costs for our collection, which has kind of led the staff to start and myself to start designing a business time capsule program in which. Supporting local businesses, hopefully with each year of operations, we can acquire archives materials so that we can start recording history as it happens for future generations. That's something that's going to be developed, hopefully. Events and programming coordinator in two thousand twenty five, we held our first antique show, it brought in eight hundred and eighty one people. Kind of shows the appetite of La Combe region for history focused, larger events that also engage local vendors and collectors. Kind of shows the appetite of La Combe region for history focused, larger events that also engage local vendors and collectors. With proper staff support, streamlined staff support, we could. We, we would like to build it out so that we can draw sponsors, financial sustainability. And this position would be responsible for that. We're also kind of. Working on a structure for a winter fundraiser. Currently, we have a fall fundraiser. In order to do that, we're looking at a potentially a heritage bonds deal fundraiser. It's in the works, but we're currently developing that. And then with two positions, the ability to hire two positions aside from the executive director, then the executive director could work. On developing fund development programs such as charitable giving or grant giving and our estate planning. We have an endowment fund through the Community Foundation of Central Alberta. And ideally in five to 10 years, growing it to one to two point five million dollars could essentially. Create a forty to sixty thousand dollar revenue that could come in each year that could be used in whatever way. It'd be a great emergency fund should the city, you know, reduce funding in the future, so. Moving our strategy in that way would be, moving our direction to, to deal with fund development would be fantastic, so. And then, so essentially the summary is hopefully, and I, I was brought, it was brought to my attention. The original application was for a hundred and twenty five, but then when I talked to the county, they informed me that there's a partnership set up with the city. For a funding structure that completely changed that, so now it's a hundred and eleven. Based on that agreement where I guess the city funds, whatever the city funds, the county funds half of that. This is, was just brought to my attention like last week, so I had no clue about it before. So the ask is only for technically a hundred, around a hundred and eleven thousand dollars reduced from what we. Had, I had written in. Now, I hate to go through metadata and comparable organizations, but I know that that request. An increase in general is kind of at times seen as unreasonable. So I'd like to provide some kind of market comparables in terms of. A reflection on city of La Combe policies. The city of La Combe compensation policy dictates that there are a set of comparable municipalities that you use for determining staff salaries. And just to use that as a standard, it states that the mean of the municipal. Comparable municipalities will be used for determining staff salaries. And so I've decided to use that to compare ourselves to other museums. We are the lowest funded museum of comparable organizations. The Town of Cammore provides the Cammore Museum point two nine percent of its total operational budget. We're provided point one eight in two thousand twenty three. That went up because we went to eighty thousand, of course, because eighty thousand in two thousand twenty four, so that makes it about point two one, give or take. But if we kind of consider ourselves at the lowest point. And the city of Fort Saskatchewan is the highest point, the Fort Heritage Precinct receives point six percent of the municipality's total budget. And that is around five hundred forty one thousand dollars. So at a point six and a point one eight as the bottom, the mean would be, I believe, I have it here. Thirty point three nine percent. So if we use two thousand twenty three numbers and we use the point three nine percent as the mean. Based on a forty four million six hundred forty five thousand zero zero seven dollars. That was the final cost for two thousand twenty three. Multiply that by point three nine percent and you get a hundred and seventy four thousand. So comparatively speaking, on the market, on where other organizations are funded. A one hundred and eleven thousand dollars from eighty two to a hundred and eleven. I don't want to assume, but I believe it's not as unreasonable as it kind of sounds, so. And then using another metric, and I hate to add. Fire, wood to the fire, and I'm getting nervous because everyone's staring at me, asking for more money, so I'm sorry. When we compare the dollars per visitor that municipalities invest. In two thousand twenty three, we had five dollars per visitor. This is the chart that I've brought up here. The Red Deer Museum in the same year put in sixty nine dollars per visitor, of course. I believe their funding was point two nine percent of their total budget and they received one point one million dollars in that year. But for provincial standard, the Royal Alberta Museum provided eleven million dollars to their organization and I covered this data last time, so I'm so sorry, but. They got a hundred and thirty five thousand visitors in two thousand twenty three and per visitor, that's eighty one dollars per visitor. And just to give you another example, the Lethbridge, city of Lethbridge provides the galt around two point two million dollars. And they get around twenty two thousand visitors per year, and that's about ninety dollars per visitor. So we're on the lowest rung of dollars per visitor that's provided, just in terms of a performance metric. That's all. So if you took dollars per visitor and you took the mean between the lowest and the highest. That would be around forty, that would be forty three point five dollars per visitor and multiplying by. Even our performance in two thousand twenty four, which was around ninety one hundred. That value would be kind of around three hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars in terms of a value number. I know it's hard to put that on. Museum attendance, I'm just watching FCS talk about transportation, I'm going, we're pointless. I don't know, it's hard to, but anyways, it's, we do activate a lot of the community and we do bring in a lot of value to the city of La Combe. But that, I'll progress the agenda like a board meeting. I'll, I'll go into the last. Goals of our five year plan. And I do believe these are attainable goals regardless of the funding that we get. It might take a little bit longer. And I do realize that's his goal three, then goal two, so I was reviewing that earlier. The other eight goals identified within the strategic plan, of course, are sustainability, working to increase the money we have in our endowment fund. I referenced that before. Capacity, working actively with the county societies to assist with governance, capacity and development. Service dependability, this is utilizing the Flatiron Building strategically, specifically from May to September. Converting the space to capitalize on tourism attendance by building a permanent history tourism exhibit that goes in every summer. That advertises and shows all the current business offerings and stuff like that, all the sites in the county. Community awareness, adopting a mail out booklet at the end of each year so that we can be transparent with the community on our performance. And our funding and our fundraisers. Service dependability, working to utilize a core budget versus a peripheral budget. The core budget is what we need to operate every single year. And a peripheral budget is if we get all the grants we apply for. That helps us be a little bit more careful with our funds. And then community awareness and the dependability, one of the big ones is offering needed and wanted services each year with more consistency. So like I said, the antique show was in September, making sure it runs in September every single year. If we do a fundraiser in February, making sure it happens in February every year and making it dependable. And I know I have a last slide and I kind of covered it, but for two thousand twenty six, if you're. I know I talked a lot about two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty five, but you know, we have events, programming, exhibits, collections, research services, summer student staffing, infrastructure and development, community awareness. And grant writing. We're always looking to expand and grow and address community needs and interests and values in whatever way. So when community groups come to us and ask us to take on certain things, like when the. The art committee, I think that's planning that festival came to us. We adjusted our, our January to May exhibition schedule to specifically be focused on art history, like. Whatever performance we did this year and last year, we're always looking to improve. I write twenty five grants a year, so. In any way, we're, we're always willing to chip in and help out and make things work, so especially pancake breakfasts. But that's about it. Sorry for the tomfoolery, but. Any questions, sir? I need questions, come on.
That, that actually does work out well because we're a bit over time, but we certainly do appreciate you coming to present to us. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks for the water.
And La Combe Performing Arts Center is up next. Executive Director Rosanna Carrickies. And friends. All right, I'll, I'll let you. Introduce all of your helpers as you see fit. And just once again, a gentle reminder to use the microphone so everyone at home can hear as well.
Okay, hi, everybody. I just want to make sure I'm clicking right here first. Okay. So the LPAC board has been working diligently to increase the organizational capacity this past year. We've been working on building policy, working on board development and securing financial stability. Our. Twenty twenty five, twenty six had a successful end to the season. With near or full sellouts, bringing in a wide variety of audience members. We are continuing relationships with organizations and members, building connections and supporting gaps within the community. Our Music in the Park received a new look this year. We're thrilled to, with the outcome of our community showcase, we had five pre-shows to our Music in the Park performances. Highlighting the different local groups, scholarship recipients and musicians. So in the facility itself, we're nearly fully accessible. Our three week wheelchair lift project is three months long at this point. But hopefully this week we will be installed and getting that inspected here, so it will be up and running by the end of October for sure. Highlighting the work of the artists in our gallery spaces, including our newly curated youth gallery. We installed new lighting to properly portray their work as well, which has been a highlight for our professional artists coming into the facility. So our provincial relationships has expanded quite drastically over the last year. We're building networks throughout the province, working with the Bounce Centre for the Arts, the Arts Touring Alliance of Alberta. And other provincial organizations like the Writers Guild of Alberta. La Combe is being, becoming a provincially and nationally recognized place for building arts and culture. So our goals for this next season. Bringing in a diverse lineup, we're quite excited about our new lineup this year. We are bringing in some larger performances like George Canyon and Air Machet. We're trying to reinforce staying local, keeping our dollars in La Combe and. Getting that trust built up, so people know that even if they may not know who's coming, they know that they'll be entertained and it's a quality performance that they're coming to. We're meeting our strategic planning by nurturing artistic programs and expanding audiences. And by investing, like I said, in the larger performances touring and local musicians and entertainers. We're beginning to be able to apply to federal arts and culture granting systems as well. Creating connections with these provincial artists, authors and musicians, we're increasing our awareness and support of the arts and culture in our area. So our goals for this next year, we're looking to further our financial stability through federal arts funding and community partners. We did have some hefty goals of getting in some new. Admin staff, which we aren't quite there yet with the current funding and we don't, we did have a slight deficit last year, so I'm being cautious about bringing in that staff too quickly. But I believe that we'll be getting there soon with these further federal partnerships. Creating stronger connection within the community and making an impact on a diverse range of people. So that's always been our goal to. Listen to the community and fill in gaps where, where needed. And building those relationships with the other community members as well, such as FCS, the museums and all of that. Continuing to increase administration capacity to further support successful programming and facility management. This is a common factor to, to last year. We aren't quite there on, on getting that new administration in. But hopefully we'll be there soon to garner some more growth within our organization for sure. So LPAC is just requesting a three percent increase this year to forty six thousand three hundred and fifty for our twenty twenty six operating budget. To support inflation and increasing costs. That was a little quick, sorry. If there's any questions.
Thank you for that. Keeping it clear and concise. I see you've got a draft budget for our review as well. Thank you for that. Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mary Creasy. Thanks for coming. My apologies, I may have missed it when you were saying it, but you last year, the one, the funding request was for additional staff. And so. You, we plan to continue with that staff, did you say, or you were being cautious with the?
Yeah, so we were a little tight on our funds and we did receive like, like a deficit in the, in the year. So we are still planning on bringing in an additional evening staff in as our goal. I've just been a little cautious in that. But coming into another busy season here again, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to. Again, drive us further into the hole, so yeah, that is our goal still, yes.
Okay, no, I appreciate that and thank you. And I, I see how busy you are there every day and anytime we're there, it's. You're impressive and your volunteers are impressive too.
They are, yes.
Counselor Hookstra.
Thanks, Mary Creasy. Thank you for the work you do, for sure. I'm just looking at your budget, your draft budget and your municipal grant is listed at fifty thousand dollars.
Based off of our funding last year, our operations grant, I'm still asking the forty six thousand, but I am hoping to get some community builder funds just to help with some. If we have some new ongoing initiatives and stuff like that. So we did receive community builder funds this past year, so that's kind of both involved in there.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like so that's all the questions there is for you tonight.
Okay.
We appreciate you presenting and keep up the great work in the community. It is appreciated. Thank you. Appreciate it, Grant. So next up is the La Combe Athletic Park Association. Don't know that their representatives are just, are here just yet. Okay, thank you. And I think we're just going to take about a five minute recess here. Thank you. Very good. We are back in session, everybody. And as said earlier, we have the La Combe Athletic Park Association. Headed up by Diane Heidick. We appreciate you being here as the chair. And. I understand that Mr. Lund was not able to join us this evening and you've got.
Neither is Tim. So this is Alex Wise, the vice chair. The La Combe Athletic Park.
We appreciate you both taking time to present to us and whenever you're prepared to go, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I guess we've got a PowerPoint to go through. Yeah. So if I could have the next slide, please. Thank you so much for having us. Oh. Oh, that one. Okay. You can hear me. My mic's working good. Yeah. Lot of familiar faces here. Thank you for inviting us. Yeah, so. The athletic park is a six point five million recreation asset for the community. And thank you for letting us present today. And I don't know, did you guys get to go through the PowerPoint first or no? This is your first time? Okay, cool. Yeah, so. Lappa's mandate is to offer the park and the community at cost to encourage. The use and to minimize the cost to Central Alberta teams. The city of La Combe and the county contribute less than half of the operating costs for which we are grateful for. The park is a great value to the community without being a large cost to the community, both capital. And capital or construction costs and operating costs. And then we do have, we'll share the PowerPoint with you later so you can go through the our park usage. We've noticed that our park usage is a little bit down this year due to the fact that we had two Bucks games that. The league had canceled out the and then of course now we're going through the strike, so there is no. High school football right now, so we're losing money there. Yeah, so it's been kind of a strange year, like after COVID, everybody was excited to be there. And now it's a little bit has backed off a bit. Let me see, we're very fortunate to have the incoming service to the park from the city of La Combe. And those are our items. You guys pay for the our facility insurance premium. You provide surface and refill grooming of the field. Grass grooming we control. Very grateful for those two porta potties from April to October for our basketball crew because we have a. A community basketball three-on-three that comes in. I think it's on the weekends they play. And then strategic planning through the community development unit, that's what we were doing in the basement today. And then we did take partake in the fundraising development services that you guys offered. Let me see, in two twenty twenty three, we asked for sixty thousand for our operating grant and received fifty five thousand for two years. Our twenty twenty four reality was forty seven thousand and some went to gas sewer power alone for that year. Leaving us around seventy seven for other expenses like payroll and general expenses like paying. Paying our three. Workers that we we hire. So we have three people that we hire. And then our yearly turf replacement, we put away seventy thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty five, we did a rate increase by five percent to all of our field user fees. Since it hadn't been done in the last eight years, so we felt that we had to have a an increase to just. Yeah, to whatever the cost, it's the, it's just different right now. So hopefully you've got the application that we. Submitted. So that's basically last year's revenues, our current revenues and our projected next year's, which is going to be pretty high. This year we lucked out because we had a. Casino and so, but we you get casinos every. Two years or three years, right? So. And then, of course, our gates just a little bit down, so. So I guess we are asking for sixty five thousand this year. And with our strategic planning session, we're discovering that our utilities are increasing. This is topics that came up. Maintenance vandalism and security is an extra cost. Our paid gate is down. And usage of the teams are down, like I said, the Bucks and. And then, of course, the strike now, possibility of replacing our current employees in the coming years who have worked with us on the cheap like Fred and Dita. They've done such an amazing job. They're so passionate about that field, but they are getting on an age and who who do we find replace? And who would we find quality to offer, you know, a good wage to them, right? And then funds to keep the park going, but yet to complete our field track and field expansion that we are always fundraising for. So the city, and I'm sorry, this slide is wrong. It's been told the Akana Building on the first phase, the city did put towards three hundred and seventy five thousand for the capital and also helped with the grants. And then the field, we did get a loan from you guys, which we did pay off. Even before the time. And then the park, you guys do sixty five thousand to cover the landscaping and the fencing and the sidewalks. And. The basketball court, you helped us with the grants. And then Field House was just for Emmy Global helped us out. And then we were very grateful to Wolf Creek for paving the parking lot because it was getting pretty bad. So. So that's basically for that. I know tomorrow, there's a forum going on and this is our questions. Well, I'll just let you read through it. About. Our, our goals with the incoming counselors. And. I know, you know, we're kind of like. Looking to see if a dome would work for us or not, and hopefully we'll figure that out by January, February, if we want to take that on. But it is quite a leap. So this has just come up in the last couple of months about doing something about that. So I'm still on that track thing because we have been, people have donated money. People have participated on our track runs. So I'm just going to give you the the breakdown on who would be. Looking forward to a track and these are the people here. I can find, there we go. This is a list of last year's track and field from the high school. We did really well and we probably would do really, you know, even more incredible. When people need to do pace, they do go to Thurber, they drive into Thurber for the Thurber Track, which has just been newly renovated. Because of Woody's RV. Woody was a great friend of Bill Nielsen's. So it's great that they got their track redone because they were, they only did it, the track. They didn't put enough pavement underneath, so that's why their track kept on breaking down, but now it's been fixed. But this is the successes of ours. These are the people who went to zones and then the four people there, they. They continued to provincials, so we're very happy to have people like that. And then this year, our country cost, country team, they, they travel to. To the track in Red Deer and they. But they did really well and they did, they moved on to zones two up to today. So it's, you know, that that's it for them, but just phenomenal runners, so. And then there's my group, these people travel to Red Deer to get. To do their pace work and everything else and and these are the trail runners. There's a lot of road runners around town that would really. Enjoy having a track here in La Combe, so. All right. And then I have been in contact with the Secretary of State and Sport, the Honorable Van Corvum. And he said that he would love to help me or us. But the infrastructure, he doesn't deal with infrastructure, but he does do for programming. So he could help me out if we wanted to host such stuff like this, which, you know. I would be, you know, really happy to help with. So and then Garrett, he is a Paralympic. Participant and he did really well with his running, so. He would, he was always hoping for a track, so, but sadly, he graduated last year, so. But he can still compete in the Paralympics. There is no age barrier, so. And then, of course, you know, running for bill, we had a. A quiet memorial run for him this last weekend and we had probably about. Sixty people show up, even though it was kind of. Evil weather, we still had a good time. So. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, so. City and county, including schools with La Combe and La Combe County. And able to book, you know, and use a track without cost, the junior high, instead of them painting a track on the field every year. They would have something to use, right? So. Yeah, so this is. This is what we have in store for for the track project, right? So. And then, yeah, and then. What the efforts that we have put in for. You know, for expansion efforts, so. So in a nutshell, you know, we are still looking for two point five million for to add this track and field infrastructure. Because we can get a million from Alberta, but other than a federal grant, there's not much there unless we are getting either a program or. Hiring somebody on, so. And we continue with our Grey Cup Party on Sunday, so we are still fundraising and we've done the casino, the online trade show. We have the Track to Triumph donation. Like I said, hopefully next year, the Trail Run for Track and Super Bowl party. And we're looking to see if we can do a bingo on track on two, so that's in the works right now, so. Yeah, so that's, we've got our Grey Cups squares. If you want to ask Alex to buy a square, he's got one. To sell you and and then our online fifty fifty cash raffle, so. Yeah. Any questions?
I believe Counselor Ross was first.
Thank you, Mary Creasy. If I recall previous budgets, we had X amount of kind of committed in the past. That was pending SIP grants. How has that progressed as SIP grants, provincial, federal and so forth? Where are we at with that? I know obviously the dome on the south side of Red Deer is private. And is very successful. Is there any dollar amount of that? That would enhance use twelve months a year with the dome. Anyways, like there's a user groups going to Red Deer to for competitive soccer and so forth for year round. That could also use the facility as other other user groups, but what was the cost of the dome be if to add to the track? Would you cover the track with the dome as well then? How much of it would you cover hypothetically?
If we were sticking with what the original plan was, I don't think you, we would be able to afford. Because it would be a, you know, the eight-lane track and everything like that. It would be more track and field. Aimed, it's not going to be like, I think Camrose just has a walking slash running track. It's not a full track, right? So. And then your CFAP question or SIP grant question. We've been told that you can't apply for both, like the CFAP and the SIP at the same time. You can't match grants on grants, so we've been told that. Well, we're applying for the CFAP, so, you know, but that's only a million, right? So. Yeah, so that's why, you know, we're still actively like applying for grants, but we do need other monies to suffice that, right? So. And that's what we've put in our grant to say, okay, we're looking at twenty twenty seven, we're still seeking out other money, so.
Counselor Golexson.
Thank you, Mary Creasy. Thank you for the presentation. I mean, I love the facility. It's great. A track would be wonderful, but I'm just wondering, like financially, would would the dome be a better choice for the organization? As far as revenue goes, because I know the dome in Red Deer, as Counselor Ross said, is very busy when we're there. One time we were there, I think there were six La Combe teams playing all at the same time. So it certainly is extremely well used. In a track, even though I. Personally would kind of prefer that in a way because of the way the facility is and a dome elsewhere. But would it, would it don't be better for you financially? My question.
It's actually ironic that you ask that question because that's one of the exact topics that we're discussing downstairs in our strategic meeting. And one of the, one of the things is it does kind of create a divergent path for us as to what we. I guess what we are, because our cost structure would would change dramatically. Under the dome scenario, I personally, I love the dome scenario. It just, all of a sudden, we become a full-time business essentially at that, at that point. So. You know, we're operating twelve months of a year. As soon as we have a dome, we're having to, our costs go up. Dramatically because we're now having to pay for cooling costs, heating costs. But as I said, we're discussing this, that we think would be a great. Venue for the community where all of a sudden we do have sports that can happen year round. All those sports teams that are going to Red Deer, now we're staying in La Combe. And and whether it's soccer, softball, baseball, football, you name it, they all want a dome. It's just a matter of cost structure to make that happen.
Can I continue? Yeah, I think it's just a matter of time before we, we get a dome somehow between the different, all of the communities in our area. I like the idea of the track in the sense of being, maybe bringing some larger events to our, to our area. Because I'm certainly event orientated, because I think every one of these events brings revenue and recognition to our community. So I appreciate everything you do with the track, the field. And if it is a dome, I wish you well with that too, because I think it's, it's all great for for La Combe.
And I think with a dome, I mean, we could. As I said, it's kind of a divergent path for us, but I think we still. as I said, it, it's kind of a divergent path for us, but I think we still can stay true to our, our roots with Lecombe Athletic Park, where one of our main goals is to provide, cost, cost effective or subsidized, uh, rates to our local community. You see it already with our, with our current field, what we have versus say, for example, what is in Red Deer. And we get teams from Red Deer coming to Lecombe to use our field because we have, even though we charge more for out of, out of, uh, teams that are out of the community, it's still cheaper than what they are being charged in Red Deer to use that. And so when we're comparing a private facility in, in gasoline alley versus what we could provide, I think that we could find a way to do it. It's just, like I said, it's, it's, it's a big step to go to the dome. So it's a, it's a hurdle, not insurmountable, but it, it does change this considerably for us.
Counsel Conick.
The thing Mayor Creasy, no, between Don's question and your answers, I think I, that was kind of my question. If you guys are looking to pivot to change from that track to the dome. So I think that's, I'm glad you're looking at that anyways. And, and my sock, my son plays soccer around and I get it, but, um, the appeal of the dome and, and I know there are even Edmonton Calgary clubs. There, there's not even that many facilities in Edmonton Calgary, in fact, for indoor soccer, for example. So I know road games will sometimes meet in Red Deer to play because it's just more sense. So if you can offer something, as you said, that's even cheaper perhaps, and you could provide some of that level of competition. So anyways, I, I, I don't, I don't envy the challenge you have or the decisions you have to make from making that transition from track, which is attractive to maybe dome. But, uh, I'm glad at least you're considering it because I think it's something, um, yeah, worthy of discussion because I think there's something there, maybe. I think seating might be difficult because I don't know if the dome would encompass or hook up to the building or not and how that would all be a pretty big dome, that's for sure. If you're going to try to, uh, much bigger than what's, uh, in Red Deer for sure. So, yeah, interesting challenge, but, um, I'm glad at least you're considering whether or not you go forward. It's, it's worthy of a look. Thank you.
Counsel Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Hopefully, uh, school user groups can be back in there and, uh, just, uh, kids get to enjoy their sports and stuff and not miss out on that part of the school as well. I appreciate that you guys are, are looking at, uh, all avenues. And, uh, you know, some may be more passionate to you than others and you guys get to, to do that direction. Um, I think in regards to one path, you would likely find, uh, more increased participation from the city where, um, it involves year-round partnership with the community and the user group. So, but that's up to you guys to decide how you want to go forward. The seventy thousand dollars a year for the field replacement, my apologies, I hadn't heard that until tonight. And so is there, is it just our weather that, or is it just the usage that, uh, that makes it so you have to replace that every year?
So the, the field doesn't get replaced every year. We, we basically are budgeting, we're putting a budgeted amount aside. Basically, when the, when the field was built, we were quoted at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the field eventually. And, uh, basically through, you know, the work that you guys have supported us on and what, and what the, uh, the maintenance program that we have for the field is actually lasted longer than, than what we were originally hoping for. We, our last assessment of the field was about two years ago. Um, and our field, uh, quantitative measurements on, on the quality of the field was, but it is still in good shape. Subjectively, we have, uh, like our field is actually on the provincial map with our location between Edmonton and Calgary. It gets used regularly by provincial teams, whether it's provincial football teams, uh, provincial lacrosse teams. They come and practice on our field quite regularly. And the feedback we get is that it's a phenomenal field. It's in great shape. When they compare it to fields like Shoal Dice and stuff, uh, the feedback is that our field is in good shape. So we're getting another assessment done. Actually, we got a quote for another assessment to be done on our field just to kind of make sure that it is just because we are starting to get to the tail end of the life of our field that we want to kind of make sure that we are kind of not having any liability issues by having that field kind of get into a, uh, condition where it's not safe for, for kids to be playing on anymore. But, uh, as of last assessment, we're still, still in good shapes.
One thing that's come about is the change of the football dimensions from CFL to NFL. And we're waiting on the Alberta, what Alberta football is going to do. So that's one thing that we probably have to foot the cost for is changing the lines. We wouldn't shrink the field because we still need the dimensions for soccer and rugby, which are like out the bounds already for the football. So there's stuff like that, that's all of a sudden just pops out of the air, right? So.
Thank you for being generous with your answer and for me thinking that seventy thousand dollars we place it every year. I appreciate your, your politeness.
But realistically, we, we will be looking at probably in the next five years, having to replace that field in its entirety. And, uh, you know, we'll probably have to start looking at more recent quotes, but I anticipate that it should be in the vicinity of probably close to a million dollars would be my guess.
Counsel Hookstra.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy. And I think my fellow counselor here, he asked a question that maybe everybody was thinking of and you asked it on our behalf, so that's okay. So two questions. Regional collaboration is a big thing in terms of recreation facilities going forward. Typical, right now we are setting up with the county of Lecombe and potentially the town of Black Falls, some regional collaboration. But on the weekend, there was a big fundraiser in Pinoka for a dome. So I guess I'm curious whether there's been some conversations with that municipality and, and, um, when maybe a potential cooperation there, partnership. You don't have to comment on that. I'm just throwing that out there. For the, the rate pair, the, the citizens in our Lecombe, I think the piece that I always have struggled with and I've said, brought it up with you before is that there are preferred users for this park. And, and I guess my, um, I wish this park was open to everybody and that there weren't preferred users. And I, I, if you would like to comment on that, I would love to hear your response.
Preferred thing really drives you, doesn't it? See, the problem is being a preferred user, they are required to do fundraising, extra stuff to be a preferred user. So that's what makes them a preferred user. No, we, we don't exclude anybody using our park. Like, you know, anybody can use our park. It's just that these three, three entities, they were with us at the beginning. So, you know, it's all about fundraising and they still have, they, they still should be fundraising for the, the preferred user, right? So that's why they've been grandfathered in. So it's not like, you know, anybody can use our park, like just give Fred a call and they'll, you know, make sure that you can get on. But it's, it's basically, yeah, that's why, you know, those three, and who knows, maybe we'll, you know, with the strategic planning, it's something else that we have to look at, whether our partners are still partners with us. So.
May I follow up, Mayor?
Yeah.
And just for those fourteen people that are listening though, the preferred users is, is, um, the people by schedule. By schedule, there's only certain schools that can use it during the day.
No.
I, I investigated it last time. Yeah, really. Yeah.
Yeah. And there's, with regards to the preferred users, we kind of have three, three rates. We've got our out of community rate, our community rate, and then the preferred user rate. And the preferred user rate is something that I struggled with too, when I got on this board. And, uh, you know, I, I thought that these preferred users were getting, you know, a better deal than they should be. But the, the truth of the matter is, is, is the preferred user rate kind of works with us because football season is incredibly, we don't have enough real estate out there. And so basically what happens with the preferred users is they share the use of the field at the same time and, and basically pay a discount rate. And so, um, we've actually had some of our preferred users request to not be preferred users. They've requested to pay the full rate and get the field all to themselves. The problem is, is as soon as we do that, then we have teams in our community that can't use that field. And so the preferred user rate is a way of us, uh, kind of partitioning the field and allowing all of the teams to have access to that field rather than having one team have access to the field while two other teams have to go elsewhere to try to find a place to practice or play. So.
Counsel Gullikson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd, thank you very much, Mayor Creasy. I just a quick question about the field. If you did go to a dome, does that increase the life of the field? Cause it's not, no longer outdoors.
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know the exact answer. I anticipate that you're probably right. But having said that, just thinking back on some of the discussions we have had around the field is one of the theories that we have as to why our field is doing as well as it is compared to, some fields, say like when we, when we looked at it, we were comparing to life expectancy of a turf field in, uh, the lower mainland. And we're exceeding the expectation of the field in the lower mainland. Um, and one of the theories was is because they basically see year-round use on their field. So we would be covered from the elements, but we would also be seeing, uh, year-round use on that field. So I, I'm not sure what the, what, how that would impact the, the lifespan of it.
Thank you, uh, both presenting that answered everybody's questions this evening. I believe that's all the presentations that we do have for this evening. However, we do have, uh, our final bigger council meeting, just to, so you can put in your agendas, everyone, and at home uh, here in chambers at five thirty PM on October fourteenth. Which is a Tuesday after the holiday Monday, just so you know. And that brings us to seven oh nine. Counsel Hookstra.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.